Okay, go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a special city council meeting for Monday, April 8th. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbeck.
Here.
Okay, thank you all. So we have item 3A, which is our special orders of the day. We have the city department budget overviews. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Yes, we have our fiscal year 2019, 2020 city department budget overviews, and we've prepared PowerPoint presentations. Each department is going to go over their budget, talk about the staffing in the department, and primarily a focus on the 2019-20 budget. Budget standing committee reviewed it with staff last week, and so we are here to present it to the full council tonight. And with that, I will hand it over to Maria Luisa Valdez.
Okay, so I'll go over real quick over the administration, go over the budget for administration. Here is the structural makeup of the departments of the city of Los Alamos. Real quick, here's the organizational structure of the departments that I'll be going over. City manager has, as far as staffing, has two full-time staff, includes the city manager and assistant. There's three part-time staff, which includes the newly made position, the fiscal sustainability manager, and the two part-time receptionists. City clerk, there's a city clerk and part-time receptionist. And in finance, there's three full-time staff and one part-time accounting manager, and it's included in the budget. For city council budget, here we have that 2018-19 budget was at $78,330, and for the fiscal year 2019-20 budget, there's a proposed $66,895. There's a decrease there primarily in non-personnel, and it's due to dues and subscriptions due to removal of a membership. And travel and training, which has a decrease of $4,500, the last line item there, and that's just more aligned with prior fiscal years budget actual amounts that have been charged to that account. Everything else remains the same. I can answer any questions if you guys have any, though. Otherwise, we'll go into the city manager and city-
One, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the reduction on dues and subscriptions?
That is due to a drop of membership ACCOC. In June 2018, there was a motion to remove membership from there. ACCOC, Association of Community-
California Cities.
California Cities, Orange County. For purposes of the budget, we have the city manager and city clerk budget combined. And here we have, 2018-19, we have a, we had a budget of $750,367 at the bottom, and it has increased to $797,755. As a big overview, the main reason for that is for personnel, which increased $627 to $690,000, primarily for pensions and funding the unfunded accrued liability. There is a decrease, however, in non-personnel for contractual services, and that went from $25,000 to $10,000, which is more aligned with prior fiscal years' actual amounts charged. I can answer any questions if you have any.
The increase of approximately almost $6,000 on benefits?
Benefits? That is due to, in that category, there's several categories, Medicare, medical, several benefits, but there's also sick and vacation payouts, which is personnel, and we put that under benefits, and that's what has increased.
Oh, good question. I thought on election expense, we were reducing that to $2,000 because we weren't going to incur the $40,000 in 1920.
That's correct. So that's a potential gap measure that we have included in the, in the April 15th meeting, and so that's when we'll have a motion, and we'll have that actually decreased. As a background, we met with the budget standing committee last week, and they proposed and questioned the $42,000 of election expense for 1920. So after discussing with the city clerk, we are going to use that as a potential gap measure, and that will be up for discussion at the April 15th. However, the preliminary budget that I proposed in March had the $42,000, so it was left for this because we had already posted it for just last week. But for the April 15th meeting, the potential gap measure next Monday, that'll be included as a, as proposing to remove.
Okay, I thought we talked about, and we were, we were going to change it and revise the posting because it's not a gap measure, it's just a realistic where the money's being spent.
The 1920 report next week, it will be reduced down to $2,000.
Okay.
And just to refresh everyone's recollection, because I know it's been a while, we're trying to close a approximately $490,000 budget gap, and so any of these measures that we take is part of an effort to do that.
Lastly, finance department budget here. We have, we had our adopted budget of 2018-19 of $720,000, and that has increased for 1920 to $764,000. Primarily here is due to personnel and also retirement, which increased a twenty, a little over $27,000 for this department. Non-personnel has just a slight increase, and that's mostly due to animal control contract, which increased by about 3 percent, is budgeted to increase by about 3 percent. If there are any questions there, I'd be happy to answer them as well. Otherwise, that's short and sweet, administration. Now we'll have police.
All right, Mayor, members of city council, what you're about to see is the police department's budget, and we've, through the budget standing committee, when we went over our department overview, they've made a number of comments about brevity, so it won't bore you with a lot of the things that we do that you know we do, and just stay with the numbers that we're looking at currently. So if we can go ahead and next slide. This slide represents the entire budget for the police department, and in it you'll see that the overall budget's increased by 6 percent. And those percentage increases, as you might imagine, come from some of the MOU increases and, and as well as the PERS increases. The MOU increases about $225,928. The PERS increases are $175,000, and total personnel increases is about $401,000. We have on here, you'll see a negative sign of 3 percent, which is the supplemental SRO contract decrease from October 2018. If you recall, we, we had to enlist the services of Still Beach to assist us with that because of vacancy that was due to a medical condition, so we didn't have the PERS or the personnel, I mean, the personnel to be able to support that program at that time, so we, we had to pay to do that, and that's why this year we don't, so you'll see the reduction in that What you'll see later on in the slides is going to be department estimated revenue in here, and we don't really focus on revenue, and for very good reasons, I think, with police departments, because we're not in the revenue generating business, and you wouldn't want us to be. But there is significant revenue generated by the police department, and they come in all different forms, whether it's citations and/or some of the grant money that were given to help offset the costs of police officers, sworn officers. This next slide is our staffing, and what I'd like to do is, if Chris Carr, Captain Carr could give us, just give you a quick update as to where we are with our staffing. Unfortunately, today, we had to release somebody from the FTO program, even though we're, we are trying very hard, and it's very difficult to keep up with some of the influx or watching, or the leaving of people from our department to other departments, we still can't lower our standards, you know, for the community safety as well as officer safety, and so we had to do that, and it was difficult, but we have other people in the wings waiting to go, and go ahead, I'll let Captain Carr tell you where we are right now.
Right, so currently, currently we're sitting at 18 sworn officers, including the three administrative here. We just fortunately were able to release one off of training, which is a good sign for us, and put him back in the field operating on his own. But like the chief said, I had to release one today. So in doing so, I have, I have one in the academy, and I have two more in backgrounds moving through the process that we hope to bring on in the next couple of months. And then next week, I'm sorry, this Wednesday, we'll be doing interviews again, and we're looking at nine applicants there, hoping to get some decent quality candidates out of there and begin a process, but again, that process is another three months. So this just keeps us very thin, keeps us moving forward. We do have the, the energy and the vision going forward, but it's going to keep our costs, you know, for physical hiring, it's going to keep us up a little bit. And then we know that, you know, come May, we have the captain retiring, we have one of our corporals retiring, and then we're hoping to bring in the annuities and keep our supervisory levels flush. So we're trending upward, it's just going to be a little while.
Yes, you have a question?
Yeah. With the retirement of the captain, what's the plan?
The plan is to start testing for that process over the summer for that position, and then not backfill that, and that's kind of getting later into some of our cost savings in the presentation, but that's essentially, that is the plan, to go ahead and, and backfill that position.
I voted against changing that back to a sworn position when Cassidy left-
Yes.
-and was told that that was part of the progressive planning, and, and that's not the word I'm looking for, but it was part of that planning. Despite the fact that using a civilian in that position was a savings, it was an additional cost to us of $85,000 to make that switch, and I was told, well gee, we don't have enough time to find somebody. Are we looking at doing something civilian-wise? We're getting, gaining back that $85,000?
We're not looking at that position. I think there are areas within the police department to consider civilianizing. This is probably not necessarily the format, because some of that stuff would require meet and confer that I haven't had with the association at this point. But that position, we've already examined and presented some pros and cons on that regarding backfilling the services captain position, and even though it may have changed to $85,000 to increase it, it's probably somewhere closer to $40,000 savings if you got rid of that and then tried to civilianize it, because of the cost of what it costs for a civilian person to come in. And I think the word you were searching for was succession plan?
Yes.
And part of the succession plan is that you're, we're trying to provide the, what would be the captain possibly promoting to the, or being appointed to chief, of understanding the business of running the business of the police department, instead of having a civilian knowing all of that, and the actual chief not understand those elements of budget, procurement, and all the other things that go on with contractual issues. And that's the purpose for why I am trying to backfill that position, but because I'm trying to look at some of the budget gap that we have currently in this fiscal, I'm looking to delay that until, and plus because of the personnel issues, until we're up to the numbers that I think they're required, so that we can backfill that position adequately without making patrol or core level services suffer.
The succession of moving up to captain, we've known for at least a month now that we're going to have a vacancy. You said we're not going to start recruiting on that until summer.
We're not going through a testing process, yes, sir.
Okay, so you're going to move somebody on a temporary basis? Is that the plan?
The plan is not to move in. I don't have the personnel currently to do that, to put there in a temporary basis. It would be feasible or conceivable that you might be able to use one of the sergeants, but we are down a sergeant already, and so we don't have, we're at core level services right now. We have just enough sergeants to cover patrol and with the use of corporals and the use of our detective sergeant, and that was part of the plan, and you'll see that later on in the presentation at the last thing, for the interim sergeant position and bringing back somebody to cover that position, so that we are able to provide core level services to the community at this point.
And I'll hold off on any other-
Okay.
-till you finish. Thank you.
And this is administration with an increase of 5 percent. The wages and benefits have increased a total of $23,945. The retirement, obviously, is going to be a broken record. It's increased $42,878. You'll see a negative sign or a negative number there for non-personnel costs, and really, that was for contractual services largely offset by the pre-employment expenses to non-department personnel. In other words, we were looking to use, outsource a lot of our, our backgrounds and other issues like medicals and all this, and it was, so we decided that was not actually the, the right place to spend that money. It was, it was, should have gone back to admin and finance, I believe, and so even though we show a reduction in that number, there'll be a greater expense in that number, and that's partially why that number increased, and so it was really, you know, a, an issue of just transferring the funds in the correct funds. And then, just so you have a picture of these two fine, good-looking gentlemen to my right, and what they do, and so you understand what support services is versus operations, and you get a look, and since we were talking about that specific position, I will tell you that, that's, that's pretty much what they do. They cover investigations, which if we had a civilian person, wouldn't be covering investigations. They're not post-certified to actually supervise any sworn personnel. They do records and evidence, communications, technology, facilities, fleet, community outreach, budget grants, contracts, and our animal liaison control, among other things.
Chief, real quick, in budget and finance, you also made a point that I didn't realize, but your goal is also, is to, after a certain amount of time, you switch the two, so both captains know both sides, both support and-
That was an excellent point, that was a discussion from last time. We, we obviously cross-trained both captains, so that we have, we have both captains as a pool to draw from for that, for that succession plan, and it's necessary, because if something happens, or one person were to retire, we do have a backup for that. That switch was actually going to be occurring this year with, with Sean and Chris, and through Sean's retirement, then Captain Carr will be in that, would be presumably in that position. And then what I would be actually recruiting for would be the operations captain, not the, the other way around. And then that would give me this whole year then to train up, if you will, Captain Carr in how to prepare budgets and how to do all the, the business that aside of the police department that he hasn't been exposed to as much, though he's been working hand-in-hand with Maria Luisa and Sean in terms of the budget that we're presenting to you today. Patrol is our biggest part of our budget because of the amount of people we have in it, and it's an 8 percent increase, and most of that, obviously, is the MOU increases, 143,000 of it, 83,000 is reflected in the PERS increases, and we have a negative 3 percent, which is the uniform, is non-personnel, which is really the uniform portion. Through the MOU negotiations, within the MOU, we, we created a different way of purchasing uniforms for our officers, and in that way, we actually reduce our, our costs. And then we have investigations, and you'll see a 9 percent increase, and once again, those are reflected in the MOU of $37,000, and then $32,000 in PERS increases. And then we have non-personnel, which is the investigative database cost increases, which is, for us, it's, it's not a huge number, but $1,600 increase because of things. We call them skip tracers. They're like databases where we can locate people, they give us good addresses, and all kinds of people that are related to them, so we're, we're doing investigation and trying to find a suspect. It's easier to find suspects when we're able to find all the people that they were familiar with or know. And then our records and property is an increase of 10 percent over the total budget of that program. $13,000 comes from the MOU increases, and then 6,500 comes from PERS increases, and then a small amount, like $500 comes to our technology, internal services charge increases, with a total program increase of $20,000. And then our communication technology, most of that is actually for the cost of our contract with Westcom, and you'll see an increase of that contractual increase of about $23,000. Our community outreach is status quo. We put a small amount out there. We don't buy a lot of, you know, swag and stuff, but what we do, we spend a lot of time with the, you know, coffee with the cop and doing all those kinds of things, and we try to make every penny count in there, and we, and we do a pretty good job with our community outreach, but it's probably a little bit underfunded, but that'll work. It's worked last year, and it's going to work this year. Our youth services, you are familiar with, mostly through our SRO program. You'll see a 9 percent increase in that, and once again, MOU represents 7,900 for that increase, as well as about $6,600 in some of the PERS increases, with a total of about 14 grand increase in that program. As you're aware, we have a cost-sharing partnership with Los, with Los Alamos Union School District and Still Beach, which we are currently negotiating that contract, and have several meetings set up next week, I believe, and, and I think maybe one after that, to try to nail down the terms of the contract, and we, doesn't, unless it gets hammered out next week, I think we'll probably wind up seeing that, well, it'll come by, it'll come back in May to be approved. And then our traffic is a slight increase, 2 percent, very small amount for the MOU increases, the PERS of about 4,200, and then our non, where the biggest chunk came from was our non-personnel, which was the data ticket contract that we use. Parking citation processing, more aggressive in collections, which is, is good, because then we generate even a little bit more revenue as a result of that, but there's a little bit of a cost to that. I think it's 58, $5,800 for that. And then we go off to emergency preparedness, which is also status quo. One of the things, you know, we use that money for in terms of wages and benefits is for participation in overtime that's used for participation, the cert training that we provide, and the non-personnel costs are about replacing the emergency services supplies, and there's a cost that we pay to upkeep for the mobile command posts that we all share, and that's about $4,800 a year. Where is that located, under non-personnel? Yeah, non-personnel, and the vehicle's actually located in Cypress. And then our special police funds are up there. The police capital equipment replacement fund, the coun, the councils been, and the councils in the past have also been wise enough to do this, to meet all the requirements for the 800 megahertz next generation radio replacement, the CATRMS replacement projects that we've had underway, putting together $70,000 a year for the police capital equipment replacement fund, which we dearly need and appreciate. And then we also have special revenue coming from the board of state and community corrections, one-time funding for at-risk youth populations to include those that are homeless, as well as the youth violence diversion and crisis intervention training. And we received, we sort of only received like a couple thousand dollars a year from that, and then in talking to the chair of the BSCEC about two years ago, and explaining to her that small cities don't really have enough money to do anything with the money that they dispense with, to do that, I go, it'd be nice if sometime they would change that around and give us a bigger chunk of money to utilize, so that we can actually program things that'll help those various populations. And so she wanted an explanation of where the money went, and she looked at it, and she couldn't believe it, but she found out I wasn't lying to her, I was telling her the truth, and, and then a year later, they went in and granted the smaller agencies with a larger amount, where the larger agencies received a smaller amount, and we got $63,000 in that. We've used that for different groups around here, and, and I might ask some suggestions later on with, for that money, that just became aware of, as I was discussing this with Captain Connolly earlier. And, and then the asset forfeiture, which is, we still have money in there to replace our mobile data computer system, which we're working on at this point in terms of piloting the different projects and looking at, and systems, and looking at which ones work best. This is the estimated revenue that I wanted to share with you. We, we know about the traffic fines pretty much, parking fines, and you can see that up there, and our daily, 30-day impounds aren't great, but they're, they exist. We do, we do submit for DUI recovery costs and get about $9,000 for that. Police reports is pretty small, but this, the Public Safety Augmentation Fund, known as PSAF, and the SLESF Fund is the supplemental law enforcement services fund, provide really the, the cost of two of our officers, close to the total cost of that. And because what we actually budget for, in our budget, under the general fund for sworn officers is 21.5 officers. We have 25 listed on our budget. One has gone unfunded for the last two years because of budget, trying to meet the budget gap. And then, then, like I said, then 21 and a half are funded through the general fund, and the rest is through PSAF and SLESF, and also the, the SRO position, that's 55 percent of its paid through two other entities.
Quickly- This reflects only projected for the new budget. It doesn't give a comparison of what it's been in the past?
The PSAF and SLESF numbers?
Yeah.
Or, that's about what we get every, every year. It's gone up a little bit, and, but, but we've also had some vacancies, so, and you'll see that in the last thing that I'll show you, in terms of how to help fill the budget gap. But, but yeah, that's, these numbers are essentially the same. They've been this way for a long time. The $100,000 was something I remember happening in the 90s when they started the PSAF, and then, and then it's also based on the half percent sales tax that comes through for the state, and that's what they, for the, for the, for law enforcement services, and so you'll see a little bit of a rise in that number. Obviously, last year was better.
Where is that, in that area? What, what is it specific?
It's SLESF, or SLESF Fund.
That's the half percent.
The half percent sales tax.
Okay, that's state, that's statewide.
What do we get from a traffic ticket? If somebody runs a red light, what do we get from that?
A red light?
Yeah.
What do we actually get from that? I believe we get like $100, yeah, $100 and a half, $150. It's about a $400 and something dollar ticket, depending on the court fees and, and penalties that they assess, and so I don't have any control over that, but when they do all those assessments, it comes out to 400 and something, and then what we actually get out of it's about 152, 150.
Okay, thank you.
Statistically, our crimes have gone down, whereas some people locally here have told us that their crimes are going up. us that their crimes are going up. We've, we've seen a slight uptick around January 2019, and there's some creep coming along, and that has to do just with, partially because we're, you know, we don't have as many probably officers out in the field as we would like to thwart some of that criminal activity. And some of it's just because they move around and they hit different areas at different times of the year. Our traffic collision statistics are down. Once again, in 19, you'll see probably a little bit of an increase in that. But, but the, but the trending is in the right direction. And it's, and you're, and before you see, can see the actual numbers. These were some of the challenges. I won't go over all of these challenges, because all of them, you're actually pretty aware of it. We just went over a couple of things with the, with our vacancies and how we're doing in terms of maintaining those vacancies. The big thing about what we do in terms of training, we can hire people, we only have so many trainers to train them. So what we have to do, one of the challenges is getting people right off, right off of, you know, being of, off the probation, and then trying to send them to be a trainer. In the old days, you wouldn't have somebody who would be a field training officer for about three to five years. Now, we're looking at to do it as soon as they come off of probation. It's, but that's not us only. I mean, that's industry-wide. You're starting to see sergeants being promoted in four years, five years. So it's, you got people out there with not a lot of tenure, and a lot of that has to do with people retiring, people, you know, going off on injuries and all that other stuff, or just deciding to go somewhere else and not work in law enforcement any longer.
A quick question?
Yes.
On the previous slide, the second and last bullet point, how does the non-traditional work environments affect the police department? Because I'm not sure how telecommuting, working from home, or remote commerce, is that a direct reflection?
Yeah, so I pulled that out of recruitment studies, and that's basically when you're looking at your current deployment sector, private sectors, you have more and more of the youth or your new employees, or even your seasoned employees looking for opportunities. Sorry, Chris. So some of the recruitment strategies I was looking at, you know, globally and nationwide, the problems were coming in is, the market is swinging towards being able to telecommute. You can, you can log in from home, and if you can work from home three days a week and not have to go see the office, that's where we're starting to see a lot of the market increase. So I just, I went up online and just started looking at global problems. And it's basically saying, hey, there's alternative work schedules, there's lack of structure, there's people that can flex their, their work weeks, and it's a challenge for all businesses, not just law enforcement, but it's a challenge across the nation to find people that, you know, want to come in on a set Monday through Friday schedule. So.
Okay, so that's not, that's just not, that's not just a lost LPD, that's a private sector of why people aren't.
This is a, it's, it's one of the nationwide issues of just employment. When you look at some of the lowest unemployment rates in recent times, they don't want to come work for the public. They're staying private where they can make their money too.
Okay.
We've lost, actually, we lost our supervisor.
Right.
Tenured supervisor to that very system where they could do all the telecommuting, they could arrange their schedule whenever they had to do things, and they can actually do it on the phone and not have to, or on the computer, and not actually have to drive anywhere.
Okay.
And, yeah, so.
So it's a private sector.
It's a, yeah, it's a challenge from the private sector and trying to recruit people for recruiting purposes, trying to get them into law enforcement.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That was it. The infrastructure, appreciate everybody taking the time to come through the police department and walk through there and examining the state that it's in and, and the commitments that you've already previously made into helping us with the men's locker room, and we're moving forward with getting that done. And then, I think that's it for me, except for, did you pass this out yet? This last page, we have a 485 or $90,000 budget gap. And in looking at that, I noticed a couple things, and this was, came through the Budget Standing Committee that really, really kind of revealed this when we were talking about the motor program. And so what I realized was that we, cutting the motor, you have to cut the officer. And I said, well, I obviously don't want to cut the motor program because we need the officer because of our numbers. But then I realized that the motor officer is actually not on the motor any longer, they're actually working patrol. So it dawned on me through this conversation with the Budget Standing Committee that, and specifically Councilmember Hasselbrink, that when I reflected on it, I thought, well, actually, I'm not going to be able to fill that position for at least a year, because nobody's going to, I'm not going to have enough people on board to do it. So if I don't backfill that position for this year, and not get rid of it completely, but don't backfill it, that's, that's 132,000 and $165, right? And the other thing I looked at was that SLESF and PSAF money that, that Councilman Gross was asking about just previously, and how much that money is, because what I realized is because some of our vacancies, we hadn't spent all that money, and we, it's very limited in terms of how you can spend that money, it's very specific. So what I, what I realized is that we budget X amount of money for overtime. And I said, well, we, we have $30,000 in that SLESF where I can pull out and pull, pull out the money that was budgeted, the 30,000 for overtime, and put that money towards that, because it will, they allow us to use it for overtime. So I'm going to use it for this fiscal's overtime, and then that throws 30,000 back into the general fund or wherever that, that gap is. And then I looked at the fact that we're short sergeants and how are we going to deal with this issue? And with Corporal Bob Tommy retiring, it made sense to see if I could have him, if he was interested in, in becoming an interim sergeant and have him as an annuitant. He said he would be, you know, willing to do that for a short period of time for us. So he'll do that at least over the summer and until September. And that gives us some breathing room, and it also, because of doing that, it saves us $28,450 that we would normally budget for that position, and because we're not paying his benefits, obviously, we're just paying his salary. And then by delaying the captain hiring or the captain promotion until at least September, that also saves $34,350. And then both Captain Connolly and Maria Luisa actually went and got together and started talking about the actual people we're bringing on board versus what was anticipated, the people we'd be bringing on board, and realized some of the assumptions, the employee assumptions of where they would be in Peppera and all these other things, and where they would start, we found that there would be another savings of about 33,000 or 32,950. All told, all told, it'll be about $257,000 to help fill that budget gap. And that would be my recommendation as a chief. I said that to the, to the members of the Budget Standing Committee, and I know that they wanted me to present that here to the full council.
Thank you, Chief. Well done. Back to you then.
Oh, I think you had a question.
Oh, questions?
Now that we're, now that we're through, I want to say, I think you guys have done a great job of trying to maintain costs. There's a lot in there that you have no control over, the overall 6% on the department, I think is fantastic. What would help, at least from my perspective, and I don't know the rest of the council, but organization-wide, we have 50 some odd full-time employees. What are we looking at in terms of those employees and the potentials for retirement? Is there a way to get a list that says, you know, this, this position is filled relatively new and would not normally see a retirement for 20 years, 10 years, whatever it might be, to give us some idea of where the hits come down, to have a captain and a, and a, what is?
Sergeant.
What is?
Sergeant.
Yeah, sergeant position leaving in the same month at the time we're having trouble. It just seems like we're getting hit constantly when we're trying to deal with other things. Is there a way to have some type of a matrix done that just shows, out of the 50 people, 10 are going to retire in the next five years, the next one year, or whatever it may be?
Well, we look at it, we look at it organizationally on an ongoing basis. The biggest hit that we're seeing is in the police department. And in terms of the biggest potential savings, ironically also, is within the police department, because you have these Peppera employees that are coming in. So we're transitioning from classic to Peppera, and there is a real short-term savings and a real long-term savings. So we, we're looking at that in all departments and planning purposes for future as well. And so each department, as they look at their own department, as we look at it as the executive team, we are building that into the plan.
Can you put something in the weekly then that kind of shows that, so that we're aware of what's coming up?
It, most of it is in the police department. And in terms of, you just don't always know what everyone's plans are. So we look at the payroll, we look at the age of the safety employees, we look at the age of the miscellaneous employees, we try to plan it out, but we can't send that out with any kind of a certainty. It's just a plan within each department.
Okay. Couldn't you tell by their age what the earliest they could retire is? Maybe that would be a start.
We do have that information. I mean, there, we can work on something together for that.
I think, I want to make sure that, we're starting getting to personnel, so I think we're going to be a little careful.
There is, yeah, in terms of age and getting information out and retirement plans and whether they're public or not, we are getting into personnel issues.
So maybe a way to do it would be to the Budget Standing Committee, to keep it kind of limited, but this would be like a retirement risk. And if you just kind of gauge it kind of from a macro standpoint, the total quantity, and then you start assigning a value, I think, based on what Mayor Pro Tem Murphy says, as people approach retirement age, there is a risk, and every day they're past that, it's an increased risk in terms of when they might want to decide not to come in anymore. And then there's a bunch of other costs. And I think when you do that, I would like to have you add accrued vacation as a, it'll be a one-time cost, right? Because I think that's a, that's a liability that just keeps pushing ahead of us, and you can just calculate for everybody and just give us a total number of what's the accrued unused vacation that, you know.
Yeah, we have that information, the compensated expenses.
Yeah. That's huge, right? So, I mean, it's just going to hit us and it's going to be painful, so. Any other questions? It was a good discussion.
I have a question. Back on special police funds, more to you, Brett. You know, I agree with what we're doing on the Police Equipment Replacement Fund. I think we're wise to put that money aside, but I was wondering, is there a way to, instead of putting the money aside now, be in some sort of lease where we lease the equipment so we're more pay as we go and we're not saving for it right now? The potential.
We're looking at options primarily with our vehicle fleet, but in terms of the Equipment Replacement Fund, yes, we're always looking at that type of a possibility to either do lease versus purchase.
So I mean, if we were able to do that, we wouldn't have to put the money aside right now, correct?
We would still have to put money aside annual lease payments.
Right.
But we would have, we're heading toward more certainty when we can establish that. So it helps, it has helped significantly with the fleet. We're looking at other options that can enhance that.
Okay. Just saying, for right now, we're short, maybe it's a way to find $70,000 for a year or two.
Our council members, with regards to Development Services Department, we only have six key focal points within the department. We have our building, planning, economic development, public works, community development block grant, and neighborhood preservation divisions. And within that matrix, we end up with a total full-time equivalent of 13.15 employees. And as you'll see here, over the last five years, there has been a reduction that's occurred, though we did this last year add the management analyst position, and that already is paying dividends for us, having that addition within the department. But there really has been a reduction for the last five years, and as I think I described to the committee last week, we've become lean and mean, and we're, we're definitely making full, taking full advantage of this resources we have staff-wise. And a fine crew that I get to work with here, names and faces, if you will, we've got 17 within our organization, four of those being contract employees, that are here on a either full-time or part-time basis. From a revenue standpoint, in comparison of beginning budget of this year and what's proposed for next year, we have about a $267,000 increase projected, and the majority of that obviously is in building permit-related activities. We continue to see a very solid amount of, of activity occurring. And the great thing about it is it's not just one particular project, it's not just a, a residential project or a hotel, et cetera, it's, it's across the board. We're seeing a lot of very healthy permit-type activities coming in with remodels and people changing out water heaters and HVAC units, and that's, that's a really positive sign for the economy, what's happening today. And we don't anticipate that dropping off, or at least over the next fiscal year. With regards to the budget, there, there is an increase identified, it's about a $244,000 increase, with the vast majority of that increase a direct result of, of the additional building permit activity. As you know, with our, our building permit, the way that works, there's a percentage of the revenue comes in, that comes in, that goes directly out to our consultant, Abbott, for their, for their services. So if the permit revenue doesn't come in, the expenditures don't go out, is really how that works. So we're anticipating this based on, again, the, the increase in, in revenue and permit activity projected for this coming year. So with that, that really concludes everything that I have to present to you this evening, and happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the budget proposed.
Any questions? Good, thank you.
Evening, Mayor, members of City Council. So here's the Recreation and Community Services Department. Of course, this is a great photo of our Surrabloss Island event. I want to remind everyone it's coming up really soon. But our slogan, of course, is creating quality of life. So this is our overall department budget here. From last year to this year, we are increasing our expenditures, but we're also increasing our revenue. And the reason why our, our expenditure is increasing is basically, bottom line is, our programming is increasing. We have after-school sports, escape room, and, you know, we're taking on more responsibilities in terms of special events, and a perfect example of that is the Fourth of July with Cypress bowing out. I have to contract out, and I have to bring in more in-house services. But like I said, our revenue is also increasing for after-school sport, we're expending out, but we're also bringing in revenue. Our escape room, we're expending out, but we're bringing in revenue as well. Here's our staffing for this coming year. Our FTEs are rising, as you can see there, from last year to this year. But again, that is because of the part-time staffing. Our full-time staffing FTE is remaining the same, but our part-timers are going up again, mainly due to the after-school sports and to our escape room. And I just want to add to that, to help us with the programming level, part of that FTE increase is because of our part-time community service coordinators. We have three of them at a part-time basis, so it's not a full 3.0, but that is also included of why the FTEs are going up. Again, this is our org chart. We got the two managers up top, Ron, or myself, I'm talking third person here, I apologize, right, and Emmeline. And then we have our supervisor, Megan Shimada, and then we have a full-time coordinator, Recreation Coordinator, Steve Kim, and we have a full-time Department Secretary, Trinys Zinovka. Those are the three part-time community service coordinator that I mentioned previously, that's Danny Collins, Erica Helberg, and Jamie Smith. that's Danny Collins, Erica Helberg and Jamie Smith. And then we also have programmers we bring into office, we call them specialists, and we currently have six of them. And then, of course, we have anywhere depend, from 40 to 60 part-time recreation leaders that are our frontline staff.
And next we'll be going over the divisions and breaking down the detail. In administration for personnel, you'll see a increase due to, we're moving one of the community services coordinators due to the reorg from the next division, which is community services 553, we're moving that position into 551. And then there are some step increases for the current full-time supervisor and coordinator as well as increased retirement costs. For non-personnel, as you know, we did have the agreement with Memorial Care, Long Beach Memorial. And with that comes marketing costs. They do, you know, they are title sponsor for several of our events. They are very fond of banner marketing and that type of thing, so there are increased costs there. There are also additional costs, our CPRS District 10 banquet, thank you for those of you who were able to attend. We also have our upcoming CPRS conference, California Park and Recreation Society, that'll be in the city of Long Beach. This banquet, I'm sorry, this conference alternates from year to year up in Northern California and Southern California. So the following fiscal year, you'll see a decrease because we don't normally attend the Northern Conference. There's a slight increase, we do have a new copier lease and then some slight increase in technology charges. For community services 553, this is basically our seniors and facilities. You'll see a decrease as we moved one of the coordinators to 551. We also decreased the dine-in Joe House senior lunch program from five days a week to two days, just to be more efficient with that program. And we do have an increase in the Tuesday, Thursday, so it actually kind of all balances out. For the technology, there was a, in non-personnel, slight technology increase. And then in revenues, you'll see a decrease. We did lose one of our big annual or yearly renters, the branch church, they did move to another location and that is a big hit to our rentals. And then we have our day camp program. You'll see an increase in the personnel as the school district has added the, so we have the fall camp and then the president's week camp or ski week. And so we have allocated personnel for that, but we are still building those programs as those are brand-new. There's also some direct competition with the youth center offering camps the same week as well as the school district has a camp as well. But we do expect to see those revenues increasing in the coming years as we build that program.
Now we're going to go to park program. Park program is our free program at two locations, Oral Lewis Park and Little Cockwood Park. So our personnel is increasing because of, frankly put, the, the program's getting more popular, more kids are coming out to the, the program. And we have a pretty strict ratio that we try to keep for safety purposes, so we had to increase our personnel to accommodate the ratio there. And again, just a reminder that this is one of the programs that we do not generate revenue, we do not charge a, a fee for this service. Sports program, you can tell right there is the biggest hit in terms of personnel. And the reason why is we're adding a part-time coordinator to this position and a specialist. And both of that, plus after-school sports, plus our song team that we're, we just had and just completed. And all that will, that's why it's of the increased personnel there, but at the same time, we do have some revenue increase there. Again, the specialist specifically was added to aid myself personally because I used to do the day-to-day for the field permits, but I no longer do that because I have other duties, so this specialist does the vast majority of the field permits. Our classes here, this is our contract classes that we have, including tennis. And so revenue there increased because of escape room, this is where we put our escape room in there. And so again, just a reminder, our escape room is a three-month program that we have at the community center. Starts in, it's October, it's two months and then it ends in November. And of course, the personnel there too, because we have to have staff there to set the room up and to provide instructions and, on how to do the escape room. But that's a large expense there is because of the escape room.
And then lastly, we have our special events division. The increase here, again, is due to the Fourth of July increased costs. We are adding a family dance, this is at the end of September, which will also act as a vehicle for us to increase marketing at the school district as we are trying to have this as a fundraiser for the schools. And then we also have escape room, the, some of the expenses here as well. And then because of the memorial care sponsorship, the revenues do cover the costs of all of our events. I'm talking direct expenses. And so that basically concludes our presentation for all of our divisions. Is there any questions that we can answer?
Questions?
Dean? I'm getting a little concerned with the competition that seems to be going on. Leif is running programs that conflict with us. They do a huge fundraiser and, and bring in sizable money and then they turn around and offer programs that are competitive with ours. Same thing happens with the youth center. And in the youth center, they're using our facilities. I don't know if that's on a cost-neutral basis or not. From the standpoint of their use, I've noticed a lot of maintenance costs on those buildings and I don't know how much of that really relates to the youth center use. But I think we need to start looking very hard at what's going on. And these, particularly those two entities seem to be running programs that we've run for years. And it's like, gee, city's been successful in doing it, so why don't we do it? And I don't know in, in our relationships with the school staff or even with the youth center staff, if there isn't some open negotiations or open discussions, this year we're going to do this, next year you do it and we don't, or something to that effect. Because both of those programs are funded by donation-type dollars. Under the impression that Leif doesn't get any direct money from the school district, so their fundraising program that they do funds it. I don't know that we have any type of a fundraising program short of the sponsorships that we go out and they're hard to get and hard to maintain. At some point, as we're moving down the line, we need to have a better collaboration, I think, with these groups or we get out of the business. We focus on other things that, that they're not going to do or they don't have the capability of doing. It's important for our citizens to be able to have those programs and events, but if two of them are providing summer camps, which summer camp is the one that's working and, do we talk afterwards about, you know, ours has been doing this, yours has been doing that? We just got to stop the competition with the dollars that are out there coming in and make sure that services for the community and the kids are being provided.
Yeah, we have been trying to, we're aware of that and we've been addressing that the best way we can. There's several different vehicles. One is, we have ongoing communications with the school district, with the superintendent now, the next superintendent, and we have been dialoguing about our, our staff and city concern about that competition for programs, especially after-school sports, the competition where we have to get approval from the principals to use the site and we may get turned that, turned down. So we're communicating that with the superintendent and the next superintendent to work that one path. No, Emlyn and Ron are also trying to establish, they're setting up a meeting with Leif directly to say, this is what we do, this is what you do, can we work together? And we even partner on the after-school programs together. And then another vehicle that we discussed last year, you were, you were not on the city council, but we're planning on bringing it back in the near future, is the discussion of a nonprofit, establishing our own nonprofit foundation, which is comparable to Leif's 501(c)(3) status that they have. And if we could do that, we think we would have a vehicle to be able to establish additional fundraising capabilities. So we're kind of going down several paths, we've discussed it with the Budget Standing Committee as well and we'll, we'll continue to have that dialogue. Youth Center also, I mean, it's, we need to talk about what they do on the weekends, what we do on the weekends, can we use our own site when it's not being used more? And we need to continue to partner with them as well.
Thank you.
So any other questions? Over here? So I just want to say thank you to the staff and to the departments that reported, thank you to the Budget Standing Committee. I think this is a nice, tight, you know, presentation. And I think we'll just move on to the next item. Got items for, anybody else?
That is, that is actually the only item. So just as a reminder, next week we'll actually talk about potential gap closures. So as a refresher, last month I reported for fiscal year 2019-20, there was a budget gap to fill of 482,510. So through this exercise, we did find some potential gap measures which we will bring forward at next week's budget workshop.
Yeah, and that, that gap actually, you'll see it lower to begin with when we bring it to you next week and then along with the additional gap closure items that we've been discussing with the Standing Committee that we will continue to dialogue through the budget process.
Okay. So I think the next item I was referring to is closed session. So, but thank you for the closing, you know, on all that and the heads-up of next week. So with that, next item is item four and I guess, Michael, do you think it's a closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss item 4A as presented on your meeting agenda.
Is it 4B as well or no?
My, my understanding was the discussion of 4B would not occur this evening.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Which one is not happening?
B. It's A.